Thank you, Josh Fox. I just want to remind everybody that extended applause just feeds into the amount of time we're already using.
Good morning, afternoon, sorry. My name is Josh Fox, I'm the director of the film Gasland. I'm going to submit in here for your review. And I'd also like to call attention to our website, gaslandmovie.com, in which we've listed all of our research and addressed the industry smear campaign against the film, and submit the entire website for the D E C's review. I'll keep my comments probably below three minutes, I haven't called, I think I'm sick of D E C hearings. I'm in the inevitable position of opening the floodgates. I'm sure you're going to hear ten hours of thousands of reasons why not to hydro-frack in New York. Your premise is wrong. Your premise is how should we frack New York? And that is a wrong premise. The question should be should we or should we not frack New York? Not how we should allow this industry to do it. A regulatory approach to hydro-fracking has failed everywhere around the world where it's been employed to try to control this industry. I challenge everyone under commission to find a single place on earth where a regulatory approach has stopped hydraulic fracking from contaminating water, from polluting air, from creating a public health crisis, and from creating civic unrest. The entire S G I S should be withdrawn, and clearly fracking should be banned in New York City. I'm amazed and grateful to all the people who are going to participate in this democratic process, but the question itself should be withdrawn. The process is a charade, it is a sham, it is a false premise. And I'm sure you'll hear hundreds, thousands of reasons why in the following ten hours. Thank you very much.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, okay, we'll just wait. It's just going to eat into people's time this week.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in the New York area, the Quavo Reliant Electricity Alliance, over two hundred members including the New York City Partnership, the Building Congress, and a variety of unions and upstate chambers. We support hydraulic fracturing because we think we need the industry.
One second, stop the clock. That is unacceptable. That's unacceptable to hear it. We will, we will just wait. There is no booing of people, you can applaud, you can whatever not, that is unacceptable to hear it. And we will wait until everyone behaves. Please.
You behave. New York area supports hydraulic fracturing. With the energy supply the key to our state's economic recovery and much of upstate, which is now an economic wasteland, time is of the essence. In the future of natural gas, a research study from MIT, experts find that the environmental impact of fracking is challenging and manageable. It advises it is essential that both large and small companies follow industry best practices, that water supply and disposal are well needed on a regional basis, and that improved methods of developing recycling and returning materials.
Excuse me, stop the clock, sir. Sir?
No, wait.
Please, please, sir, sit down, it's not even time to speak. Sit down.
I am number two.
Then that's fine, then you'll go next.
This man.
Sir, I have a list, sit down.
I am second.
Sit down, sir.
I am second.
Sit down.
This man jumped.
Sit down.
Don't be so rude.
This man jumped.
Sir?
Mr. President. A balanced approach to hydro-fracking, dealing with minor safety concerns and the fact that you want to attract industry to New York State, I think is critical to this process. New York buys its natural gas from places as far south as Louisiana, we even buy them from countries who are our enemies. Natural gas is something that we desperately need. If we're going to be anti-nuclear, anti-gas, anti-union power, then the answer is the state of New York will not have any economic future. It's a common sense approach and we hope you'll take it. Having abundant, affordable, natural gas ensures that this state is going to have some degree of prosperity. We need to do it, we don't want to rely on arable oil. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't point out one thing. If you travel to upstate New York, you find out how desperate landowners, farmers, and businesses very much want to be revitalized.
Sir, sir, we'll wait, we'll wait.
Farms are wasting away, homes can't be repaired, empty stores in small villages, there's a dead economy. I invite people in this room to take the trip upstate and see what the people there want, instead of substituting their judgment for them. We very much appreciate these hearings, we urge you to do the right thing, we support hydro-fracking.
Thank you. I'm just going to remind everybody and treat everybody with respect, everybody has a right to speak, to sign up here, and really, treat everyone with respect. This is a public area. Next, I'm going to call Clark Routs.
Clark Routs from Worcester, New York. The D E C Chapter Four is a combination of a sales document and a novel titled "Lying By a Mission" that has a hole so big that it could sink the great ship, the USS President Cuomo. At the State University, there was a project costing 1.6 million. It was, State University was the project manager, New York State Energy Development Authority paid the money, the lead researcher was Dr. T. Jacoby, who co-authored all twenty, co-authored or co-authored all twenty-four papers. And it would be found in Technophysics 2002, Volume 353, page 75 through 113, here and after referred to T N P. All the figures in Chapter Four, Geology, range between the year 2002 and 2009, except one, that is Figure 4.13, a thirty-five-year-old document that shows most of New York State with few major falls and virtually no minor ones. Why not use the two geological fault maps in T N P that show hundreds of minor and many major fault lines? What has this due to the water of New York City? Everything. These are the maps, you can see, 4.13 is light, seventy-seven, nineteen seventy-seven. These are the maps by Jacoby, which show major and minor faults. This is from Dr. Jacoby in his, I'm sorry, this is from Dr. Jacoby, in his last discussions and conclusions. The conclusion is inescapable, that large number of faults do exist in New York State, and that several of them have been scientifically active. An important observation is that the scientifically active faults crisscross large portions of New York State. The high number of faults means most cultural facilities, e.g. waste disposal sites, bridges, pipelines, batteries, generation plants, pipelines providing New York City with water, are not far from potentially active faults. Thus, this is vitally important to assess the maximum credible seismic event that can be expected along these falls. From another map, which is potential yields of wells and unconsolidated aquifers in New York State and Hudson-Mohawk Valley, I combine these sheets and I draw the following conclusions. Using Figure, using Figure 4.1, okay.
Please someone.
If Governor Cuomo is psychopathic and willing to sacrifice billions of New Yorkers for his obsession to become president, then he should be removed from office by all available means.
Can you just leave in the box? Louise Johnson.
Louise Johnson, Sky Hill Farm, organic, eggs, Schaefer County. The drinking water on my upstate rural farm might also be your downstate urban drinking water. Our county aquifers are large, connected, underground lakes that flow towards the New York City watershed. What's more, these huge contiguous aquifers are already compromised because of karst, a very fragile underground network of cavernous limestone, as exemplified in the nearby half caverns not far from my farm. Karst with its numerous sinkholes and caves allows surface water to flow to groundwater. Contaminants from household septic systems and farm and small industry runoffs have already entered our upstate drinking water. Hydrologists fall Ruben Rowan, we have the most hydrologically vulnerable aquifers anywhere. County-wide record floods have also polluted our aquifers with everything imaginable from medicine cabinets, farms, plastic factories, gas stations, and again, these aquifers flow toward your city drinking water. If our farmland is allowed to be fracked, the repeated pressure of 10,000 pounds per square inch will transfer horizontally through the fragile karst, which lays above and below aquifers. Cave collapses and the buildup of methane and radon in caves, the further threat are endangered bats, which like none of these are essential to the balance of many other ecosystem. Fracking wastewater and diesel fuel will penetrate into the karst through streams and sinkholes, even in a rainstorm. Think of the cumulative effect of fracking and you frack one well and the well next to it, there are to be six or more wells drilled and fracked in the single well ahead. Wells with cracked or aging cement casings and seals will leak toxins into underground pathways to our groundwater related lakes. There's no way we can find any fracked chemicals once they move through the cavernous openings into rapidly flowing aquifers. The fact that our county has serious seismic faults and history of earthquakes will facilitate collapses and water contamination. Ninety-one quakes since nineteen seventy-three in our county, including the largest in the state's Gasland area. The S guys does not mention or map karst, does include an accurate map of seismic faults, and although the D E C has outlawed drilling on one-hundred-year floodplains, it uses oxymoron floodplain maps. So man-made mini-quakes and injections of toxins into our caverns and aquifers, our floodplains and faults should be banned.
Next speaker is Catherine Skobin.
Preserve creation, oppose fracking. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm New York State Resident Catherine Skobin, principled environmentalist, participant in the United Nations Commission on Sustainable Development, and work with 350.org, Food, Water, Rock, and United for Action. New York State has been blessed with some of the most pristine and rich armlines in the world. These are precious birthright, necessities of sustained citizens in all life. Such gifts are not to be tampered with or endangered for any reason. Respecting all people and after considering all aspects of this issue, I have concluded that regulation not being affected for multiple reasons such as the brittle cement used to frack a well caused undetectable leaks, and there is insufficient oversight, there are hundreds of reasons not to frack, I'm going to focus on just three. One, children, everybody in the room, stadium audience, raise your hand if you have children. Yes, raise your hand if you have grandchildren. This is the first and foremost reason not to frack. What kind of world are we leading for them? Will they have clean water and polluted land to produce food? It's our responsibility to secure their future and to leave the world better than we founded, not worse. Two, health. More than 250 doctors across New York State wrote to Governor Cuomo, pointing out that there is no study on the long-term effects of fracking on human health included in the environmental impact statement. In fact, in the 1,500-page report, key words such as physician, nurse, endocrine, metabolic, healthcare, or pediatric, don't even appear once. This despite the many abnormal and well-documented cases of cancers, neurological and immune system disorders, found in residents of states where fracking has been going on. Third, climate change. Through scientific analysis of ice cores, we know that in the last 650,000 years, at no point did the CO2 level rise above 300. Our CO2 is now at 390 parts per million. James Hansen and Bill McKibben have ascertained that if we can get the CO2 levels back to 350, we might present a tipping point. We have alternatives to fossil fuels. Other states and countries effectively are developing adaptable renewable energy technologies and creating long-term jobs, healthy economies, and sustainable environments in the process. I believe that we too can do this here in New York State. For example, thermal solar energy retrofits with hot water heating systems. Lastly, in relation to hydra-fracking, I believe that natural gas is an oxymoron. There is nothing natural about it. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to start out with some facts about water. Forget the regulations. First of all, less than 1% of all water on earth is drinkable. That is, less than 1% of water on all earth is drinkable. Second, 884 million people in the world lack safe access, lack access to safe drinking water. Over 3 million people every year die from drinking contaminated water. Next, moving on to fracking, one frac well uses 3,500 gallons of water. Now, given the preciousness and scarcity of clean water, what on earth are we doing? What on earth are we trying to use our scarce, precious commodity? Throwing it away in the process of fracking? And now, there's documented cases in Dimick, Pennsylvania, of people having their water contaminated, there's livestock dying, there's fish dying, the earth is dying, if you allow this. I'm just moved to feelings. I am outraged that this is even a thought. I'm outraged, and you, and I continue to say that the gas companies have no right to take our scarce and precious water from us. Thank you. And next is Bonnie Lane Weber.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Lane Weber, I did a video to Cost of Food, I was co-chair and co-chair of the Sierra Club National Sustainable Consumption Committee, but I'm not talking as the Sierra Club, I'm talking as Bonnie Lane Weber. We are responsible for protecting our food sheds in New York State, that requires us to ban hydro-fracking in the state so that our food will not be contaminated by chemicals used in the fracking process, in addition to brine, heavy metals, radioactive elements, and more that will come up along with the methane. The fifty-nine doctors and scientists from physicians, scientists, and engineers for Healthy Change, in their letter sent to Governor Cuomo on September 15th, said it much better than I. They warned Governor Cuomo that municipal drinking water filtration systems are not equipped to handle chemicals and contaminants resulting from hydro-fracking. We, the undersigned scientists, write to you regarding the ability of municipal drinking water filtration systems to adequately remove contaminants of the sort found in return fluids from hydraulic fracturing, should they somehow enter the water system. The state has proposed that hydraulic fracturing not be allowed in the watersheds of New York City and Syracuse water systems, where no filtration occurs, but be allowed in watersheds where drinking water is filtered before use. The presumption appears to be that municipal water filtration plants provide protection from potential contaminants. The best available scientific information does not support this presumption. I'm not going to continue reading, I just want to say that we must take care of our food and water, and you can't drink money.
Stephanie Rinzler.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Rinzler, I'm a former McKinsey business, I'm a former McKinsey Business Analyst, I have a Harvard Business School MBA. I would like to challenge the S guys on account of the numbers. I think if we added up all the numbers properly, fracking would be a losing proposition. I believe that we need to revise the S guys to incorporate the new U.S. Geological Survey that has now reduced the available gas estimate to 84 trillion, four hundred and one trillion cubic feet. So the job numbers and the revenue numbers have to come down massively. On the cost side, the S guys, I don't believe includes hardly any of the costs that we as New Yorkers will have to incur as a result of fracking. The heavy deterioration of the roads, the cost of the increased inspectors, the cost of the emergency responses, the cost of the loss of value of real estate, the water filtration system, which will not even filter out the radioactivity in the water. We have revenue losses and job losses in vital U.S. industries that have not been netted off against the acclaimed job gains, for example tourism, agriculture, wine, beer, sports, real estate, those will be heavy job losses that have not been accounted for. There's the cost of society of increased sickness, this can be modeled, this has not been done, there's not been any human impact study on the pollution that will be caused by fracking. It's not, that isn't, it's not, it's just the risk, it's actually a part of the fracking process that cannot be avoided. I refer to Sanaa Steingraber's letter to Andrew Cuomo November 16th, which is extremely well researched on the subject of cancer and fracking. Also refer to Deborah Rogers of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, who said, confirmed that gas drilling contributes more toxic than all cars, trucks, airplanes combined. We need to study the Barnett Shale evidence because they are ahead of us in fracking in the area and the health effects. They had to pay for costly impact statements after the fact, they had to pay for air monitoring stations, millions of thousands of dollars, which have not been accounted for. And to the lone fracker who jumped in line before, I want to say that German strawberry farmers are making fortunes from using solar panels in part of their crop rotation today. Germany is 28% renewable, and Austria is 67% renewable as a country.
Good afternoon, I am Paul Rush, Deputy Commissioner in the Bureau of Water Supply and the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on natural gas drilling, a subject of vital interest to the city of New York. In the interest of time, I'll summarize the content of our extensive comments contained in a letter we'll be submitting to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The city greatly appreciates and supports the proposed ban on natural gas drilling utilizing high-volume hydraulic fracturing within the New York City drinking water watershed. We commend New York State and the Department of Environmental Conservation for stepping up to protect this vital resource. Balancing environmental and public health concerns with the need for adequate energy resources and economic development is a complex and challenging issue, not only in New York but throughout the nation. As you know, the New York City water supply system provides high-quality drinking water to nearly half the state's population. The Marcellus Shale underlies the entire west of Hudson portion of the New York City water supply. The proposed ban on high-volume hydro-fracking within the New York City watershed address a large proportion of issues the city has previously raised in connection with environmental review of these activities. The most significant remaining issue is the protection of the city's water supply infrastructure outside of the watershed. The specific risks to the city's tunnels, which are lined with unreinforced concrete, include damage from direct penetration, differential pressures, micro-seismic activity, and impacts from migration of fluids and or gas. The revised draft S G I S merely provides for coordination with the city on wells within 1,000 feet of city tunnels, which only addresses damage from direct penetration to the tunnel. In 2008, the city hired the joint venture of Hazen, Sawyer, and LBG to conduct an objective assessment of hydro-fracking's potential impact on the water supply system. The city recently added Hager-Richter Geosciences to the joint venture project team, focused on potential impacts to the water supply infrastructure for microseismicity and reactivation of faults. Their technical report indicates that recent studies of fractures and potential faults, as well as existing information on joint patterns, support the earlier conclusions that the area around the water supply infrastructure is more fractured and faulted than the S G I S portrays. Technical reports have been released recently that directly link hydraulic fracturing to small earthquakes in Blackpool, England, and potentially in Oklahoma. The S G I S concludes that the magnitude and micro-seismic events is too small to be an issue. This may be true with respect to surface structure like houses, however, the city's infrastructure is located deep underground. Given the identified risks to the New York City water supply infrastructure, the 1,000-foot zone proposed in S G I S for enhanced coordination with the city is inadequate to protect the water supply. Other risks we will address in our comment letter include the potential for the treatment of drilling wastewater within the watershed, impacts from solid waste handling and disposal, potential chemical spills, and damage to city-owned roads, bridges due to increased truck traffic. In closing, we again thank D E C for the tremendous protection that a ban on high-volume hydro-fracking provides to consumers of New York City water. We look forward to discussing these remaining issues in the future as partners in our efforts to protect this invaluable resource.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next speaker is Eric Goldstein.
Eric Goldstein, Natural Resources Defense Council. Thank you for extending the comment period, thank you Councilmember Jim Gennaro for your continuing leadership. Governor Andrew Cuomo, who's had a longtime, strong record on behalf of the environment, has pledged, "New York State must ensure that if and when the state's, the shale's natural gas is obtained, it does not come at the expense of human health or have adverse environmental impacts." Unfortunately, the state's draft environmental study and the proposed regulations, which would allow for large-scale fracking throughout the southern portion of the state, will not fulfill the governor's fracking pledge. Are New Yorkers going to accept a fracking program that doesn't fully safeguard all drinking water supplies around the state? No! Are New Yorkers going to accept a fracking program that doesn't have a protective strategy for handling hazardous wastewater and other liquid and solid waste generated by this heavy industry? No! Are New Yorkers going to accept a fracking program on such a scale that it industrializes our cherished communities and permanently alters their landscapes? No! Here's a few words of suggestion for our friends at the state D E C. Go back to your offices and rethink the direction you're heading in. Come back with an environmental impact statement that describes the cumulative environmental impacts of the 42,000 or even 62,000 wells that you project will be constructed over the first 30 years of your fracking program. Come back with an E I S that analyzes the potential adverse public health impacts of such full build-outs, and that assesses the socioeconomic causes of such build-outs to agriculture, to tourism, to other sustainable economic anchors in the Marcellus Shale. And come back with an E I S that proves to us, through demonstration or pilot projects, that fracking can be done safely in New York before you attempt to launch any large-scale fracking program around the state. Finally... Finally, a message to the fracking industry. We don't want New York's air pollution from your large-scale fracking operations or our roads jammed with high-volume truck traffic, as you've already done in Wyoming and Texas. We don't want New York's irreplaceable water resources contaminated with methane and fracking-related pollutants, as you've already done in West Virginia and Pennsylvania. Downstate and upstate New Yorkers working with our elected officials hand-in-hand are simply not going to let business-as-usual, fracking express, plow through New York and jeopardize the water we drink, the air we breathe, or the communities we live in.
Everyone, please, hold your applause and stop the clock.
Detailed, detailed written comments to follow.
Thank you.